Shall I jump in?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Very sensitive.
Thank you. So this is our annual update, which is our best practice that we've been doing for 18 years, to be honest. We're, you know, we like to sit down with the city council and bring you up to date with what's new with the drive, some of our initiatives, you know, just make sure there's a good solid dialogue between us as we go forward. I mean, there's no question. Good afternoon, Lilian. There's no question to us, anyway, that this is our most important partnership. I mean, we have partnerships with lots of organizations across the region, but the partnership started with, between the Greenville Drive and the city of Greenville in late 2004 and has continued very strong today. So, I mean, that's something that we treasure greatly. I think it also, I should say that I didn't realize this was going to be Shannon's initial meeting as city manager, but just from a personal standpoint, and I've been around, not necessarily Greenville, but around the world longer than a lot of you. And it's always great to see when someone who's got significant expertise and significant work ethic and the like gets recognized and promoted, but when that individual, I'll just say, also has a heart for the city and a heart for the work that she does, and they had that all in one person, I think you guys have made a wonderful, wonderful choice.
We think so, too.
You want to hire her with the drive? It's too bad. A lot less stress. Exactly. That's what it rains.
Smart enough not to do that. But, no, our last time together was May the 9th, and so it's been a little over a year, and there's no ask at the end of this, so you can all just take a deep breath and relax and just, you know, kind of enjoy, but there has been some very significant developments in the world of baseball that I think it's important as partners just to bring you up to date with what's going on, what's keeping us up at night and the like. So today, you know, three main topics, you know, floor field facility updates and what we're calling the West End Entertainment District, the progress we're making on that, talking about our community programming and drive programming, and then an update on minor league baseball, Major League Baseball, what's going on there. I will say on the facility side, there's been more construction and related construction activity than ever. That involves District 356, and hopefully you've seen that firsthand, and then the facility standards that we've also completed in response to Major League Baseball, and the city was very helpful in assisting us with some of the financing, you know, behind that, so we certainly want to say thank you, and we're most appreciative for the assistance on the facility side, and so we want to give you a sense of what all we've invested in along the way. On the community programming, Jeff will cover that in detail, but that's our secret sauce, if you will. I mean, at the end of the day, thinking of, thinking of it like technology, the hardware's important, but the magic is really in the software, and our baseball business is the same, but the stadium is wonderful and it's very important, but it's really the programming that we do that kind of makes that come to life and really builds the partnership. And then back in January 2021 was the new player development system that was, I'll use the word imposed on us by Major League Baseball, and now we're in the two and a half years into that relationship, and just like any new business, there's some surprises along the way, there's some things that are good, some things that are not so good, and just keeping that, keeping that dialogue in front of you. You've, for those of you who've seen this slide, you've seen this slide before, but our mission hasn't changed. We're steadfast, you know, and it's great that Lilian's here, I mean, she's the one who coined the phrase back in June of 2005 when we were digging the hole for floor field, and she said this is more than about baseball. And to be very honest, I wasn't fully aware of everything he meant with that statement, but it really has, you know, come to life, is this, this is much, much more than about baseball, and our business isn't the business of baseball, we're in the business of making baseball, and our business isn't the business baseball. We're in the business of making memories and making the upstate a stronger community, and, you know, that, and I know you're all looking at different economic development councils, and we very much see ourselves as an economic development asset for the city, for the county, and for the region, and so making the upstate a stronger community is something that, is what we are all about. Hopefully you'll look at this slide, and, and I would just say, sometimes a picture is worth a thousand words. Those are the same picture, just eighteen years separated from two thousand five to what basically the floor field site looked like in two thousand five, and on the right is what it looked like recently.
That's a great shot.
Yeah, it's a great shot. You know, we'd never seen, I walked out there with Lily in one cold Saturday, Saturday morning or Friday morning, but anyway, never, and I'm serious, never seen so many syringes in the ground in, in one place. It was just unbelievable, the drug activity.
This is back in '05.
Yes, back in '05, not since.
What were those buildings along Main Street? Were they abandoned warehouses or?
And there was a chemical company on the end over there.
You could see Green Avenue. Cut right through the site. So it's been a wonderful journey, you know, and, and the, the bigger Greenville becomes and the more diverse it becomes and the like, I mean, the more, we can't, to me, ever take this story for granted. It was a lot of intentional activity by many of you around this table that created and made the West End, you know, what it is, and we're, we're very proud of the role that we played in the development of the West End. You know, back then, I had no intention of moving to Greenville. Greenville's now our home. We've got two of our three kids and five of our six grandkids that live here, and so it's been just a wonderful story. The ballpark was ballpark of the year in two thousand six when it came on stream. We were acknowledged by an editorial that become the front porch of the community in two thousand eleven, which is a positioning that we've really embraced and try to live out that, that walk. We were named the top team in all of baseball. In two thousand seventeen, there were a hundred and sixty teams at that stage. More recently, we've led the league in attendance for four straight seasons. We do have one of the smaller venues, sort of lead to lead, lead to league in attendance. It's one of the, I call it more intimate, not smaller, but one of the more intimate venues. It's quite an accomplishment. And the bottom there is dry baseball plus West End events, which is our kind of events organization, really has become, you know, our year-round home to our community's highest profile events. Artist's Do and Floria and Mansion Upstate and other significant community events in addition to dry baseball, Carolina Clemson baseball and the like. So all I have to say, there's a, there's a drive season, a postseason, a Christmas season, and a preseason, but there's no offseason.
When I took my grandkids to the Christmas thing, we had the train going around.
Yep.
So, so later on, they were taken to a baseball game. They wonder where the train was.
The train's there.
Where's the train?
We'll be back next December.
I'm disappointed.
They wanted it that night.
Unfortunately, the train is called Norfolk Southern Railroad, but I think you're thinking of a different one. But, I mean, these were actually from Mary Douglas back in the fall of two thousand twenty-one. We haven't, you know, we'd never done a, a community impact study, per se, but these are numbers from the, from the city. So clearly, I think floor field has, you know, been the catalyst for the renaissance of the West End. You know, you can see the number of building permits, the property values, and these are exclusive of, of County Square and exclusive of anything to do with Unity Park in terms of business licenses, number of sales. On the right side, you know, I think very important number of multifamily developments, four hundred Red Deckers, South Ridge, four oh eight Jackson, Sun Cap to come, and then what I'm calling, and I think we're all starting to call it now with the West End master planning, that was done, an emerging entertainment district that includes District three fifty-six includes the Bellwether, which is a former Liberty Tap Room, the Children's Theater, Gather Greenville, you know, Markley Station, not quite sure of the status of the Kimpton Hotel, but New Realm Brewing Company coming in the cigar warehouse. So there really is an emerging kind of entertainment district that admits the multifamily developments that are coming.
Is that Bellwether Place open for lunch yet, or is it just dinner?
Not for lunch just yet. That's.
Where Liberty Tap?
I know. Steve Dow ate there last week. It's not open for lunch. Maybe he just had an early dinner there, but he said it's very, very good. That's what he said. He's a connoisseur. Food made by other people.
Very good. So that's, that's kind of where we've been, and I think this is a little bit of a view as to the, the direction that we're, we're going.
Well, there's a couple kind of pivot points. I mean, one, we tell our, our staff kind of every day that, I mean, there's incredible pride in eighteen years of progress and community impact and the work that we're doing, but we also have this kind of relentless lens on continuous improvement, and we can never be satisfied with the impact that we've had to date, and we always have to be thinking about the community and how can we add more entertainment quality and more impact and, and just, you know, more, more benefit to the, to the community in general, more memories. And when you look at kind of side by side, the, you know, the impact of what we've done with the, the ballpark on a year-round basis and then adding District three fifty-six in the last year and what that's done for us from just a year-round event standpoint, it's really transformed our business. I mean, we've, we've really made an intentional pivot in the last four to five years to, this is about a lot more than just baseball season and year-round community events, and District three fifty-six has really taken that to an entirely new one. Looking at a couple of the just featured projects that have taken place at the ballpark, so you're up to speed on kind of everything that's happened, totally starting with the facility first, ballpark, based on a lot of those, kind of the new Major League Baseball facility guidelines and the rules that are guiding the entire industry, we've made some very significant updates to the ballpark. And so, I mean, the first kind of marquee update is this is what people don't see very much, is that everything that's actually underneath the five hundred club area of the ballpark.
Welcome to a range of private.
Yeah, it's spectacular. I mean, it's amazing. I mean, there's eight thousand new square feet of, of space in the, in that five hundred club area, and when you look at the, what we've done from a player clubhouse, locker room, technology spaces, you know, meeting areas, you know, brand new transformed weight room, kind of training room area, really branded nicely, kind of telling stories of the drive and the Red Sox, and this is the feature area where the players are spending all their time, really telling that story of all the alarms that have come through and the like. The whole player facility side of the ballpark has been transformed based on these, these new guidelines. So that's, that's, you know, the pictures do, don't even really do it justice when you look at the, all of the work that's been done, locker room standpoint, and some of these quotes are just, I mean, they, we, and the way we interpret the quotes, too, is there's, just should be pride from everybody that's involved in this project in the community when we see, I mean, these are quotes from players that have come through, staff of other teams, Major League Baseball leadership and the like, and we've heard it for years, and we continue to hear it now, that, you know, Greenville sets the standard, not just from a facility standpoint, but from a community, from a city, you know, this is as good as it gets in terms of minor league baseball. We continue to, we continue to hear it. Some of the less kind of maybe not quite as sexy updates at the locker room, but other kind of facility updates that we needed to make from a facility standpoint, netting the entire park, which is critical for us from a safety standpoint, we had to, also from a safety standpoint, but also aesthetics added past to the entire outfield, really updated the look and feel of the outfield and improved the aesthetics there, and the update that's coming actually next year, twenty-four, is we're totally gutting and redoing the lighting at the ballpark to be, I would be across the board, both in terms of the product and the system standpoint. So when you think about some of those higher-end football games that you've been to with the lights and the things you can do from an entertainment standpoint, that's really going to transform our ability to bring lighting into the fan experience that we're excited about.
I mean, a good, a couple of good examples. Back in the prior slide, the two drive mannequins, I mean, that's something you might see at USC or Clemson's football area. You'll never see, you know, minor league park, but we want to do that extra. And then on the LED lighting, the minor league minimum is a hundred Kamba power across the outfield, and the major league standard at all the major league parks is a hundred and twenty-fives. So brighter lighting, so we're, you know, we're going to the hundred and twenty-five, you know, standard, just because we're, we always like to just surprise people sometimes with some unexpected things and to have superior lighting. I mean, you can't do many more things for your players because most of the games are at night, and to have superior lighting is something the Red Sox and Major League Baseball will both very much appreciate.
Did the Jack Porter group do y'all's inside with the mannequins?
It was actually our architect, DLR, out of San Luis, who designed the ballpark originally, and then handled all the major renovations. They have an experienced visual graphics team that did the work.
We worked with Christina a lot in two thousand seventeen when we did some of the five hundred club and all. She's a seasoned ticket holder. Good relationship there.
And then in terms of District three fifty-six, so this has been our first full season, both kind of the event season and baseball season to activate District three fifty-six. It's more than lived up to our expectations and capabilities of what we can do from an entertainment standpoint. I mean, it's, again, it's modeled after Jersey Street and Fenway Park in Boston, which is their entertainment area right adjacent to the ballpark that they use for, to activate all the events that happen within Fenway. So that's the model that we've used here, just being able to take the fan experience, the entertainment quality that fans have really come to expect inside the ballpark and have it start on the street. Starting that, the marquee events in Greenville are anchored here in one way or another. We think of Art Sphere's opening night gala, and actually mentioned the Kringle Holiday Village, had an opening night component to Kringle here, that community health fairs. We've had all kinds of different event types with baseball and without, and it's really transformed our host, you know, in some additional ways. And then kind of part of the, the District three fifty-six project is, is also down towards Augusta Street, too, which.
Yes, so this is District three fifty-six extension, if you will, which essentially when we went before the design review board, if you haven't done that, I recommend that for everybody. But, I mean, it was very quite, I mean, people joke, and I do as well, but their input was very helpful, at least I thought it was, and they felt we had more landscaping and the like as we came down to Augusta Street, and the comment was, we needed to take, take that urban feel that we had achieved along District three fifty-six and extend that more urban feel right through to Augusta Street. And I let them know that was working with Duke Energy and working with Norfolk Southern Railroad because it was their property, and that's not always easy to do. But we've been successful in basically coming up with the design that you're seeing. That's, the review board is very happy with it. Working with Nick and Shannon and others from the city, we, we're in the process of relocating the, the traffic signal, the control boxes that are there, kind of cleaning up that, that corner, continuing the urban feel, and, and I think it'll, I mean, I think it really, you know, presents itself very nicely. And then if you think ahead a few years to the master plan on the GTA side of the ballpark, I think it marries itself ultimately well with the master plan that's been developed and right across the more green space on that side of the master plan. So we're very excited to be, you know, working with the city and working through the District three fifty-six extension. And then continuing, I had to put a little emphasis on the, the Bellwether, which we talked about that opened in April. We significantly opened up that space. We enhanced the patio, we enhanced the walk along Main Street, and just changed the whole feel to it. It's, it's operated by the same individuals that operate the Urban Renn, and so far so good. The Sun Cap Development Project, that's the West End Community Center for the AM and E Church. That's, you know, we had a vacant lot that we contributed towards that project. You all have been amazing. It took, I know it took a while and a lot of cooperation from a lot of people, but they're, when they build that parking garage, which will be wrapped by the apartments, I've come to understand, I know more about development now than I ever have, but I've come to understand that most multifamily only build parking for the people that live there, and through investment from the city, there's a hundred and twenty-five public parking spaces that are going into that development, and that's, you know, we only have one chance to impact our next door neighbor, and that's not necessarily going to solve the parking challenges in the West End, but I think it's a, it's great for us, and we were very thankful to have that happen, and, and so wanted to formally say thank you all.
When, when are they going to start? Anybody have words on that?
I just, probably, I mean, I was told third quarter, so sometime soon. Quite honestly, I've been County Square as well, not wanting to ask too many questions, sure that somebody might start.
So far so good.
We're trying to get to September fourth. Now we made the playoffs, and now we've got to get to September fourteenth, I think it is, to be through the season, but it's, I mean, it's imminent in terms of when they'll, when they're starting.
Are they through all the permitting processes, all the planning, all the reviews? Sun Cap is, it just seemed to go on forever. I didn't know if we ever reached the end of that.
Yeah. Well, and part of it was adding the parking that had kind of gone down in section, and then we were able to kind of get the parking reintroduced, and City was very cooperative. Sun Cap was very cooperative and was very persistent, so.
Every little spot helps.
Yeah, and then the New Realm Brewery, that's the cigar warehouse. They've now broken ground, and that's will be, I think, a world-class brewery and a scratch kitchen, again, adding to the entertainment district. And if you haven't yet, if I'd have known it was Shannon's first day, I would have brought a Rally Bill Lager for each of us. It's probably not robbery, but partnership with New Realm, we've launched Rally Bill Lager, which is the official beer of the Greenville Drive and joking aside, it's a Vienna Lager, and it literally is the top-selling craft beer in the upstate. It's been very successful, having been introduced early in April. So we're very excited about that. So, so everything that you've just seen, that's about twelve million dollars of expenditures that have taken place since we last, you know, got together and, you know, worked. There's a lot of, you know, effort, but we think it's, you know, it's like anything, you know, once you see the final product, it's something we're all very, very proud of, and I think it adds to already what was a, a world-class facility, and I think it just makes that much more memorable.
Then, I mean, even with all the amazing construction projects and the development that's going on, you know, around the ballpark, and continue to go, continue to advance the, you know, I, I continue to argue that the magic of floor field, we've talked about it already, the memories, the impact, it is, is what happens programming-wise inside the ballpark. I mean, people's view of, of us and our place in the community and the upstate is because of everything that's, that's hosted and showcased and celebrated within the stadium, both, again, both attached to baseball games and also on a year-round basis. And our, you know, we're especially proud of the last, you know, twelve months and the quality of our programming, the quality of our events being more relevant and impactful as ever. And I mean, honestly, we could spend, this is only a snapshot, we could spend, you know, multiple hours going through all the different events and programs that we use at the ballpark or showcase, but whether it's the showcasing our incredible downtown with, with Dry Business Downtown Event or the city's birthday, which is coming up on August eighth, the Green Day, our reading All Stars program, which is, that's a showcase sixteen, seventeen-year program, encouraging kids to read and celebrating academic success all across the upstate. Now we've had closer to one point three million kids come through that program across seventeen years versus, you know, amazing.
Look at some of the reading scores coming out of post-COVID. I mean, reading is even more important today than it was, you know, two, three years ago. So they have a reading program that's well-accepted, partnered with Michelin, and it's.
I use it with my own kids, too. My oldest is eight years old, and now he's, I mean, I'm using the reading program as a way to keep him from laying on the couch all summer, so it's a very strategic tool. And then, I mean, diversity, equity, and inclusion, continuing to make more and more emphasis, you know, around using the ballpark for, for D and I programming specifically. The three things that we pulled out, we had a, back in, back in April, had a, Jackie Robinson Day was celebrated all across baseball, where we, we celebrated Jackie as part of our, our Black Spinners program, and then earlier in the day, working with Devita and the Rainbow Push Coalition, hosted a HBCU career fair on the concourse before the game. We had over thirty HBCUs on the concourse. We had most, I think, you know, close to seven hundred and fifty kids come through, you know, totally free, being able to use the concourse in the ballpark in that way to, you know, spotlight HBCUs and academics.
It was very exciting. I enjoyed it.
Really well done. Eric, our general manager, really spearheaded that for us. And then also the Other Boys of Summer, which was our, our second Black Spinners game back in June. That's a documentary produced by Lauren Meyer. That's a documentary produced by Lauren Meyer. It's talking about telling the story of of Negro League baseball and individual stars within the in the league and, you know, all the trials and tribulations that they went through as they pursued a career in professional baseball. It's an amazing documentary. And that June Spinners game, we actually showed the documentary on the video board, a pregame screening, and then had a Q and A session with Lauren and a couple of folks afterwards on the dugout top. It was the first stop in a nationwide tour across various minor league facilities across the country. It was just a very well attended, another way to spotlight diversity and it's been really impactful. That worked out tremendously well. Workforce, you hear us, your dad, you hear me talk about workforce development often. We have a, you know, really a portfolio of of workforce events now attached to baseball games that, whether it's manufacturing, whether it's teaching, whether it's healthcare, aerospace, innovation. We have a baseball game centered on each of those topics, celebrating the industry and then also building the workforce all in one. You know, AM and E Night is coming up in a couple of weeks, where we're going to transform the entire concourse with manufacturing, engineering, high touch engagement exhibits from about 20 plus companies in the upstate. We'll have 2,000 kids here, K through 12 students that attend on a complimentary basis. I believe in that workforce of the future. It's just a, it's just amazing what you can do with a baseball stadium, we can talk about workforce. So again, we could spend hours on this slide in terms of the amount of time we put into, but really the focus is we were always sitting down, kind of starting every day, how can we use the ballpark for good within the community.
Just to put a plug in and again, thank the city for the support that you all have given to Next. I know that's something fairly new and innovation and entrepreneurship. And I think that has a lot to do with where Greenville is and importantly, where we're going. And so we have a night that partner with the city, partner with Furman, partner with Next to really celebrate entrepreneurship across the across the platform. And I think that's been various, this will be the third, third year that we've done it coming up in September. So that's the facility, that's the programming. And then the the next would be the update on my major league and minor league baseball. As I said, you know, it's been two and a half years and and, you know, the change is accelerating, I think it's fair to say. Just as a, not too many pictures on this one, it may be appropriate, but this one would be, you know, just kind of going through quickly. So January 2021, we signed a new kind of franchise agreement with Major League Baseball. You may remember 42 cities lost their affiliated baseball at that time as they went from 160 teams to 120. The focus was on facility, 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 focuses on an operating platform and in our mind, on more corporate ownership rather than individual ownership. Silver Lake Partners is a private equity firm. Many of you, maybe you've heard of it. It's a global technology investment firm, has $100 billion of assets under management. Their companies have $276 billion and fail 710,000 employees. So it's a pretty good sized private equity firm. And they went to the commissioner of baseball and and said, we'd like to start buying, you know, minor league teams because they all have a theme. And we think there are synergies if we do that, and we think we can improve facilities as we go through that. And so they had purchased nine teams at the end of 2021 and they were authorized to buy up to 20. And they were just last month authorized to now buy up to the 50. And so 50 teams out of 120, that's 42% of the industry. So it's it's not inconsequential. It's, I think it's a, I position it as a threat. I mean, there's other people would say it, see it as an opportunity. It's kind of like anything in life, depends on your perspective on things.
This is not a cumulative, 50 is a cumulative number. It's not, they got nine, then they got permission for 20 more. And it's not 79, it's 50.
50 is.
They're capped at 50 now.
They now.
Or not cap, but now they're up to 50.
They are capped at 50 now. Whether that cap stays in place is to be determined.
Is there precedence in professional sports about preventing any ownership group from having more than majority stake?
Not, I mean, there, I mean, a lot of that has gone by the wayside with, you know, sovereign wealth funds. And I mean, private equity used to be precluded from getting involved with sports teams, but then the more evaluations started, you know, going up and, I mean, the LIV and golf is well chronicled and the like. And so most of those restrictions are, I would say, seen as a bit old fashioned and and fallen, either have fallen or are falling by the wayside. I mean, their thesis is to, you know, supercharge the growth of each club through, you know, sponsor sales, then operations, licensing, marketing, content creation. The more that gaming, the more that, you know, kind of gambling becomes part of the sports world to have assets that can be aggregated in that way as a, as a way to create value. We happen to think, and many other people like us happen to think, that they do pose a threat, if you will, to our historical, you know, ownership model, which is, you know, we're individuals. I mean, not everybody like here lives in the community in which they operate, but it's many owned by individuals who are committed to their community, committed to community issues, community, community, to community betterment. And that's not to say they won't do that, but I I think I would argue very vehemently that somebody who lives in the community, who cares about the community will be much better engaged than a corporate entity who's maybe due more on the profitability side.
And does Silver Lake, do they own currently any in the immediate area? I mean, I guess I could give you a 250 mile radius. I mean, what's the closest team they own?
Well, they will own Spartanburg. I mean, that's coming up in a minute. And I think while they bought all the Atlanta Braves, so they own Gwinnett, they own Rome, they own Richmond, they own.
One of the other South Carolina.
Yeah. Well, they own Augusta, North Augusta.
Jackets, Green Jackets, right?
Yeah, the Green Jackets. So they're, and they own from AAA down to Single A. So they're, they're not, there isn't a bias towards one major league affiliation or the like. They'll own three of the four Red Sox affiliates, will be the one independent affiliate, which again, we we think is an advantage. But and they're offering, you know, very compelling, you know, prices to get people to sell and things like that. So again.
We're getting low on time, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, Greg.
So just two more slides. One, so how I wanted to cover, I mean, it was publicized in the press, the Spartanburg team that's coming to Spartanburg. And we got a call April the 6th from Major League Baseball indicating that a team wanted to come to Spartanburg and relocate into a new $100 million stadium and mixed use project. We determined that it was a couple of years in the making, involving some pretty high profile individuals. The Texas Rangers were selling their Kinston, North Carolina team to Silver Lake, and the sale was contingent upon the relocation to Spartanburg. The key players was the owner of the Texas Rangers, Ray Davis, Silver Lake Partners, who had the backing of Major League Baseball, Commissioner Manford, and the George Dean Johnson family in Spartanburg. They were able to secure $70 million of public monies coming from the state of South Carolina and from Spartanburg County, from the city and the Spartanburg Chamber. The relocation was possible back, our territory used to be defined as Greenville plus the contiguous counties, Spartanburg and Anderson. When we signed the new agreement, it was changed to 25 miles from home plate and anything beyond 25 miles was subject to MLB discretion. The proposed team in Spartanburg is 27 miles from here. We were given six days to offer our perspective, which made for one hell of a negative opening day to get that phone call and then having to respond. We did respond with help from a lot of other minor league owners because they could kind of see their own situation, kind of, you know, operating like this. We have a team in Round Rock, Texas, and all of a sudden Austin wants to own a team. I mean, there's a lot of different scenarios if you go 25 miles from where a team is as to where another team could be. So we had a lot of help. We took the position that Spartanburg, Anderson, Greenville is essentially one integrated market, the upstate of South Carolina. We've been very committed to regionalism. You know, all of our workforce programs go across the region. We've got a big relationship with Milliken, a big relationship with AFL. You know, all the growth here is occurring kind of in Simpsonville, Five Forks, Greer, you know, along the county line. And so if you look at the future, you know, it's going to be equidistant between Spartanburg and Greenville. So it was a significant threat, if you will, to our, to our business. But long story short, we we made a very effective presentation. We're Greenville, if it wasn't before, it is now very clearly on the map of Major League Baseball. The commissioner himself said that he referred to Greenville and us as a model franchise, but we couldn't stop the momentum. At the end of the day, as happens in life, kind of money and relationships prevail and there will be a, a new team in Spartanburg beginning planned on April 2025. So, so three kind of takeaways is the last slide. One is competition has increased. You know, I would say our family commitment, our community approach, you know, our resolve. I mean, we're kind of competitive people. That's nothing's going to change in that regard. But our city with the, our partnership with the city is is very important. I mean, you you all have been wonderful. There's nothing else you could have done to, you know, to stop this, if you will. And as Jeff said earlier, our secret sauce is always going to be the the community programming that we that we follow. You know, we do need to focus on the continued growth of that West End Entertainment District with affordability and access key. And you know, part of minor league baseball, we've worked hard on keeping our ticket prices still, you know, still a $9 ticket and the like. But we will lose 800 parking spaces at County Square. Thanks to Knox and others, it was going to be in April. So I think we're going to get our way through to September. But clearly for next year, those spaces are going to go away. And so we're going to have to find probably some kind of patchwork solution and and cities helped some this year and, but we'll need even even more concerted effort for next year. We do need a long term parking solution, you know, whether that's Greenville High, County Square, you know, the GTA site for the Presbyterian Church. And ensuring that GTA master plan that Rob.
Robinson.
Robinson has developed, that that comes to life. You know, I would say from my personal viewpoint, I don't need to own anything, but I'd like to have influence as to what happens there so that we can integrate that development with Ford Field. And then the last point is, you know, we are in a position of strength. I mean, the Red Sox love us. We have a brand new respect for Major League Baseball. Between us, they're feeling a little guilty as to what's happened to our neighbor, but the threat is is there. And, you know, the thing that struck me is that when you read the, read the press release, it's, you know, the state of South Carolina, the county, the chamber, you know, all, you know, at one Spartanburg, if you will, it all happened kind of in one meeting, whereas for us to get alignment across our, you know, public community partners requires like five meetings between the state and the county and the city and GEDC and the chamber. It's just a tougher process to get alignment than it is right now in Spartanburg on issues like we're facing. So nothing, again, I don't think there's anything you can do or I'm asking you to do just to be aware of the challenge. And I'm sure there will be some, you know, asks for help along the way as we kind of navigate our way forward. But but just in summary, again, we appreciate the time, appreciate the interest, the dialogue, the commitment. Love the partnership. It's been life changing for us and we, you know, we just don't want to see it stopping and seeing the change and.
Great, great update. We are going to have to go into executive session. We have a 5:30 meeting and we got.
Okay.
But thank you for coming by.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate everything you do.
Great work.
Thank you, Senator.
Steve, thanks for coming.
Mayor Council, you have two items to discuss in the executive session. The first is a proposed lease agreement for property on Jacon Street to require a contract under subsection 82, 30 dash 470A, or the 30 dash 470. And under the same subsection, an update on negotiations incident to propose contract for purchase of property in the Central Business District.
Motion?
Yeah. Second.
I said.